August 28th, and the United Party of Color, would you please stand on their place of allegiance in the moment of time.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on the agenda, the approval of amendments from the August 14th meeting.
Make motion to approve amendments from the August 14th meeting?
Second.
It has been moved in second to approve the amendments from the August 14th, would the clerk please call roll.
State.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Gillis.
Yes.
Malo.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda, we request your comments from the public. We are being done. Next item on the agenda, consider resolution 2017-12, amending the start date for the property tax exemption for INX International Inc.
Mayor, council members, Scott Anderson, bond counsel. The city previously granted property tax abatement for the INX project, which was a 37,440 square foot expansion of its facility at 2647 South 96th Street. This property tax abatement was granted pursuant to the Kansas Constitution. The Kansas Constitution states that property tax abatement starts on the January 1 of the year following the year when the project is complete. The Board of Tax Appeals has recently issued an order granting property tax abatement for this project for the calendar years 2018 through 2027. The problem is, the time we issued the bonds, I assumed along with the borrower, or along with the applicant, that the project would be done in 2016. That is not correct, the project was not completed until early this year, in 2017. Because of that, pursuant to the Kansas Constitution, the Board of Tax Appeals issued its order stating that the abatement started in 2018. Right now, we have a performance agreement with the applicant. That performance agreement states that they get 10 years of property tax abatement. It's the same schedule that we approved at the time the tax abatement was granted last year. But that property, that abatement schedule in the performance agreement runs from 2017 through 2026. The resolution before you tonight approves an amended and restated performance agreement. The amended and restated performance agreement is identical to the original performance agreement approved at the time that the abatement was granted, with one caveat, it states that the tax abatement years are 2018 through 2027. This will make the performance agreement consistent with the Board of Tax Appeals' order that was issued. So basically, what we're doing is, everything is exactly the same as when we approved it last year. The only difference is, we're changing the 10 years of abatement. We're pushing everything out one year, because the project was not completed until 2017. Happy to take any questions you may ask.
I would just note that for 2017, they are paying their full taxes on the project in front of me.
That is correct. On January 1 of this year, the county assessor, a county appraiser would have went out and appraised the property. And whatever it was appraised for on January 1, they will pay full taxes on for 2017, since the abatement's not starting now until 2018.
Mr. Mayor, make the motion, would you adopt the resolution 2017-12?
Second.
It has been moved in second to adopt resolution 2017-12, although, would the clerk please call roll? I almost said all of these were here.
State.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Gillis.
Yes.
Malo.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, Scott.
Next item on the agenda, we consider authorizing the acquisition of tractor, boom mower, and all associated equipment in adoption, resolution 2017-13, authorizing the financing for this.
I will just come up here and make it easier for mine. We really have two items before us in this one issue. And that is the acquisition of a tractor and the boom mower attachment, and then the authorization for the financing of the site. As you know, the issue of right-of-way mowing, and especially getting up into the trees and brush along the right-ofways, has been a constant problem. We have made attempts in the past to use third-party services for tree trimming, and we have used some outside resources, such as the Unified Government to help with this, but it is an ongoing and ever-present problem. Therefore, in the 2017 budget, the council approved funding approximately $18,000 annually for five years to purchase a right-of-way mower, which is running a tractor with the boom attachment. So, while we did not go out and do, quote, "the competitive bid process" ourselves, we utilized the HGAC or the Kansas City Regional Purchasing Cooperative, which is what we use on a number of items. We can just go out and say, hey, we want, you know, this particular tractor, this particular attachment, and then we'll give government pricing. But on this particular one, we decided to ask them to give us quotations on four different makes and models of tractors, that being New Holland, John Deere, Kubota, and Case IH. Case IH is the agricultural side of Case, and effectively is the same as New Holland, it's really the same company. We received pricing from John Deere, New Holland, and Kubota. We then also asked for the boom mower attachments from Diamond, BushHog, and Alamo Industries. Those are the ones that are within their bidding and are some of the most common products out there on the market. After reviewing those, it is our recommendation that we acquire the Kubota, which was the lowest price point on the tractor. We did try to make each of these tractors as equal as possible. That is, if they put on additional items like weights or lights or things like that, we took those out, so we were trying to, you know, do apples to apples. And the Kubota was the lowest price. One of the other things that we looked at that was important to us from staff was, where's it coming from and how it serves? Because Kubota prices this through their corporate office in Great Line, Texas. New Holland prices it through a company called Landlord in Irving, Texas. So, who we deal with is not always who the supplier of the equipment. Obviously, in this case, it's through Kubota, and then they use a local dealer, because we know that local dealer is calling influence that's in Bonner Springs. If we looked at New Holland, one of our concerns was, the New Holland dealer is in Topeka. So if we had maintenance issues, things like that, we would have to address it in Topeka. Likewise, we got pricing on the attachments from Diamond, BushHog, and Alamo Industries. And while BushHog is slightly less expensive than the Diamond, we contacted, actually, co-work director, that Snyder contacted a number of the local cities that were using primarily the Diamond or the Alamo Industries, I don't know if we found anybody using BushHog in the region. And again, that would ship out of St. Joe, Missouri, was the dealer that they used for that. Where Diamond is a local vendor, out of Kansas City, Missouri, through Murphy Tractor. And so, they will ship it to us, and then they'll go to Kubota and they'll attach. So, our recommendation overall is to purchase the Kubota tractor on the amount of $49,149.36, plus the Diamond attachment, $23,395.99. We think there'll be somewhere between $1,500 and $2,000 of accessories. Again, each one comes a little bit different make and model, how they put weights on, and the additional attachments there. But approximately, on the Kubota, it's probably going to be about $2,000. Again, some of it's like which kind of, you know, safety lights we'll put on, and things of that nature. So that is our recommendation on the purchase. Likewise, we generally have used Union Bank and Trust for financing. However, in recent time, probably about within the last year, our bank, Bank Midwest, which is our repository bank, has also started doing municipal finance and leases. They were not doing that previously, so we asked for proposals from each of the two banks. The Bank Midwest came in at about 2.58% interest rate, that's the best way to put it, and UVT was at 2.95%. So it would be our recommendation to enter into our lease agreement with Bank Midwest. All the other terms and conditions were exactly the same. We have a five-year lease purchase agreement with the first payment made in 17, basically upon receipt of the equipment. And then we set it for July in the future years, which gets past our time that we get our tax payments.
Mike, is that package all in the same resolution, or are you...
Yes.
Okay.
The resolution basically approves the financing, authorizes the city manager to enter into the stack of papers that the mayor and staff decide. I do know that there was some question that was raised, and we did do some research, about maybe utilizing the Unified Government to assist with this. Did speak with their public works director, and they're actually getting kind of away from the business. So, we're going to leave the maintenance of those rights away to their residents along those sections. At least that's what their proposal is. They'll still take care of, you know, ramp bridges and some of those things, which we need to do as well. But they intend to reduce the amount of service that they're providing through their existing right-of-way mower. That's not our decision, but they won't be as available, either way, it would not be available to us for that. So, that's what we said. I'd be happy to answer questions about why one or the other, but we spent a fair amount of time, you know, they're all of the same size. We need a PTO of a certain power to run the machine. You know, I think Kubota is a proven tractor. We like the John Deere because it's local as well, but, I mean, we know what we're dealing with with Kubota, solid tractors, and things of the sort as well.
I'm glad you're finally going to do something about that, we've been pushing that for quite a while. Can I ask that this night, or is it adequate piece of equipment? Do you think it's an adequate piece of equipment to do what you need to do with it?
Well, certainly, yeah. Mike has done lots of research, and I've been with him a long way, so certainly. And I've talked to lots of municipal governments, and, you know, city leaders using theirs quite frequently. You know, mowing back the trees and grass and things that need charming, or ditch section around Kubota's.
Is it going to require some training for the operators?
Absolutely. One of the things that we have to discuss is, some of our other cities, and Alito was one of those. I don't remember if he's potentially retiring soon. That is one of their operators, is to maybe spend some time, you know, we would probably contract hire him as a part-time employee to maybe do some of this upfront and help us with training or personal. We certainly don't want to just send him down the road, you know, start, I mean, that thing's pretty, you know, it's a pretty dangerous piece of equipment. And, you know, you've got a big planing blade that's, you know, four feet diameter, cutting things up to four inches, so, you know, obviously...
Tree branches are dangerous too, for...
Yeah. One of the reasons you've used the closed cab, and that's one of the problems with that right-of-way mower we have right now, if you put the side blade up, I mean, you're just exposed to everything that's flying out of it. From a safety standpoint, it's really not our preferred. It's great for mowing the rafts along the side, because it's not, while it will mow straight up, it's not a very stable operation, that sounds.
I'm assuming, assuming we looked into used equipment?
We did look at some used equipment. We didn't get much response, but we looked at some of the John Deere's, the 2014, 15, same model number, and they were three to 4,000 more than what we could buy at the range. So, and as far as the attachment, I don't, you know, most people that might have one of those for sale, it's probably pretty well-used, I mean, that part takes pretty much the beat. But looking at things that are like two or three model years older, with, say, 500 hours or less, generally costs us more than we could buy it. Because we get, you know, Kubota, we're getting like a 22% discount off the market or list price. So that's pretty significant to be able to cover that.
What type of warranty or service coverage should we come up?
I believe it's a one-year on the tractor and it's five years on the drive trains. That's what I recall, and I don't know if it's on this purchase.
One year was the same, and they were all the same?
Yeah, they were all the same, but I believe they were one year with a three or five year on the drive train. I'd have to verify that, but the drive train had a longer warranty on it than the tractor itself, but it was pretty, they were all pretty standard in that.
Two-wheel driver, four-wheel driver?
Four-wheel driver.
Is this in this 2017 and 2018 budget?
Yes. And we'll actually be, payments will be roughly, I don't know, a little over $16,000, so we'll be about... Because we'll end up, we originally had thought we would be in about the $80,000 range on our payments. At this point, we're using $78,000, in reality, we'll probably be about the $74,000 to $75,000 total. So we're asking for that authority up to that $78,000 amount, so we don't find ourselves short. But we won't borrow any more than what's necessary to acquire the package. We just need to make sure, so they send the attachment, what are they, you know, what's Coleman going to charge us to put the attachment in? So there's some cabling, some plating, so there's a couple of hours of maintenance, those types of things. So we don't want to say it's exactly that, and then come back and say, well, we get $500 or $600.
How are we going to handle PMs on this equipment? Is this something we're going to do in-house, or can we, do we want to look at building it into the lease of the tractor itself?
Well, I don't think we'll build it into the lease, but we'll utilize, again, that's one of the reasons of having the benefit of somebody local that can work on this, of Kubota being Coleman and Bonner Springs. Several of the companies have mobile trucks. Now, the basic things like changing the oil, or, you know, you've got to add fluids to this thing. There's a, it's called a DF fluid that they put in there, that's really for environmental control purposes, JAD or two diesel. I mean, those kind of things we'll do here. But if it's probably annual maintenance, things like that, I think our preference would be to send it to the Kubota dealer to do that. We really don't have anybody in our staff that would say it's a diesel mechanic, type of person, or tractor mechanic.
Maybe just worth the question, say, for the five years of lease, can we build that in?
Well, we could look to see if that's an option. We have not asked that question.
No, you don't have to find more operating budget to...
Right.
Pay the maintenance.
Part of that is, again, because, you know, we get the quote, comes through Kansas City Regional Purchasing Cooperative, who then utilizes HGAC, you guys use that a lot, which is the Houston-Galsden area council. And then, so again, Kubota does all their stuff through their corporate office. So, all their bids, national bids and everything are done through their national office, that's how you get about a price. And again, then they, I'm not sure how they work with the local vendors. My guess is, they say, this is what you're selling it for, and the local vendor gets a rebate or some adjustment to, you know, to cover their expenses for delivering the tractor and making the savings, et cetera. But we can look into if there's a, you know, fixed annual maintenance that we can add to the contract as far as purchase price. I just, we didn't ask that question through Kubota.
The price insurance, right? I just pulled it, everything up, and developed it, 106 horsepower and all...
We were trying to get 85 horsepower for the 85 PTO. We need really 70 was the minimum. Quite honestly, the S-Down tractors are right at the 70 level. The problem, I mean, for the, literally, you're talking a couple of thousand dollars probably. And when you start after cutting on some of that brush, you know, that PTO power is going to mean a lot, so...
Well, I guess it's getting that machine to do its absolute limit versus this, this machine is built heavier and can handle things better.
And that's why we, again, we use the John Deere 5100, the New Holland T4100, and the Kubota M5. I mean, they're all, I mean, you can go, New Holland has a great site where you can go put in all the different tractors, and it'll give you all the side-by-side, you know, downs, he makes the electrical wiring parts. So, that was kind of a nice feature to have, but these are all, you know, would compete against each other if you put them out there in the market.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number 27-13. Second.
It has been moved in second to adopt resolution 27-13, would the clerk please call roll?
State.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Gillis.
Yes.
Malo.
Mayor, I'm just asking this, but I mean, I don't know that we need a separate motion, but if you all feel like you need some, give me, I mean, you've authorized the lease purchases of the equipment and the terms there, if you feel like you want a separate motion on the actual purchase of items specific of Kubota and the Diamond, we're open to that, or...
So you want to specify to end the motion?
I would suggest that you just do a motion, authorize Mike to purchase those two.
For the city council.
Okay.
For that. And then you've already done the resolution to finance the council.
Okay.
Mayor, I have a motion that we purchase the Kubota tractor for $49,149.36, and the Diamond attachment, which means $3,399.59, understanding that we may have an estimated $2,000 in add-ons onto the tractor.
Second.
It has been moved in second to authorize the purchase of the Kubota and the Diamond attachment. Would the clerk please call roll?
State.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Gillis.
Yes.
Malo.
Yes.
We believe that the tractor is probably fairly readily available. The attachment is probably three weeks out, and we'll have to schedule the installation of getting it installed. So, I would say we're probably four to six weeks out before it can be operational.
Thank you, Mike. Hopefully it comes out of Houston, right?
No, it's... Let's hope it doesn't come out of Houston, you know, it's probably in use or underwater, so...
Okay, you're up next.
Just a couple of things unless there are questions tonight. The first one, just, got an update on the quiet zone, I think there were some questions. So I reached out to Brent Thompson, who is the county engineer, is kind of a lead on the project. Basically, they're still working on right-of-way information. And they are getting with the railroad and trying to get some mapping and support research documents. Basically, they haven't done much since our, since they were here and presented to you what they presented to you. So they're still kind of in the field surveying mode. I did also reach out to the commissioner about this, and he too was trying to find out what the status was. So I think we're going to be setting up some type of a monthly type of meeting, just to get at least updates to the group where we sit on this thing. But really, it's in the hands of all senior associates, who are the engineers of record on behalf of the Unified Government as it relates to the quiet zone. The related item to that is the work we've been doing on the PSP project, mainly staying in the places. We have met several times, and one of the questions that we've worked on in PSP is, we've done a lot better job as the sport, because we're mainly focused on Fourth Street and K32. So, our folks have kind of put together a preliminary, a pretty preliminary design that would show the width of the street as we'd like to see, the 28 feet of the sidewalks, where those would be located, how the intersection might be upgraded for turning movements, and how we might do a, you know, they show going up and doing a road and coming back down. And we have a little different concept of maybe, that we take that around the tight bits or back out to K32 to replace the bridge that's been impassable. So, we're trying to work those two projects together, and so we've met several times on that. We will be having, and our date hasn't been set yet, but probably in the next, I would say, within the next 30 days or so, a, our first public meeting. And we're mainly focusing on trying to get the businesses and homeowners that are in and around that Fourth Street corridor there. So, coming up Fourth Street, going down K32, the north side, up in that area, to get them at that first meeting, so we can make sure we can kind of get that user group input at that point. We will have some other meetings that will be, you know, see why anybody can come, but we're kind of focusing a target audience in that first public meeting. So, it is moving along. I think that project's scheduled to be complete by end of year. I will say, they've done some really good demographic information already. And what is interesting is, our age group, that zero to 14 and 25 to 34, is growing faster than you predicted to be. And our 55 and older is growing much, much slower, or actually declining at a rate faster than we would expect. Even though both groups are growing, but as predicted. And then as you move 2015 through 2030, we certainly see that senior population growing at a pretty, estimated at a pretty rapid pace. So, they've done a lot of work around the demographic pieces, not just taking census and saying, here's the numbers, but trying to also look at some predictive models, which will be useful to us for things like park programs. We were talking about how to be useful there. You know, there's discussion about senior living, and, you know, how do you incorporate senior living into your, into your overall comprehensive program? So, I've been very pleased with the team that's been put together, and the DHC is the lead agency, but several of the people they have working with them, they've really done a nice job in this. I think that covers what I have.
Mayor. We have Officer Daniel Flynn, he'll graduate on Friday from the academy, he's been down there a long time. Figure out what he looks like. So it's good to have him back. We've made a conditional offer, and we're working through the process for a new hire, very expected vacancy on October, March 19th. So, we have a small group of candidates, but we certainly got a very quality one, a veteran of the military forces. So we're excited to have him, maybe coming on board, but we're not through the process yet, so, awesome.
Thank you. Keep fit.
Counsel, a few things tonight. Last Wednesday was the launch of the Kansas City Metro Area with Pulse Point, and it's all the news. I'm going to kind of brief the council on what Pulse Point is. The principal behind it, slide back. Pulse Point's a mobile application, it's going to allow you to sit there, you're ready for yourself, your phone, and it's going to make an alert when there's a CPR activity going on, and then walking distance of where your phone is at. The principal behind it was the fact that early CPR saves a lot of lives. So, part of the planning process put in the Heart of America Medical Fire Chiefs Association and the Midwest, or Mid-America Regional Council Emergency Rescue Session, was designed to pick up the part of, how do we address sudden cardiac arrest that's affecting our community and the high death rate that goes along with it? Difference is, one of the big aspects of the American Heart Association model is early access to CPR, early access to early defibulation. Now, yes, we provide everybody a ambulance, it is on scene in less than four minutes. However, the time for the 911 call is made, the time of your dispatch line at the door can be up to two, two and a half minutes. That is two to two and a half minutes of a person who could be down, suffering from a CSA event, with all the brain that started to occur within four or six minutes. So what we have is identified to the American Heart Association, is probably 57% of the American population is trained in some form of CPR. So, I mean, they're certified, they set standards, they have an understanding of training in hands-only CPR. The American Heart Association is releasing a one-minute YouTube video showing you how to do hands-only CPR, which is the principle of Pulse Point, is to identify the early access part. 11% of the American population is performed CPR on individuals having CSA events. Most of the times, people are sitting there not realizing the event is going on, when they are trained and able to do something to save an individual's life. An example was being in Shenanah, twenty, and had a concert in Spokane, Washington, and somebody called in 911 for an individual that dropped over to sudden cardiac death. And by the Pulse Point activation, had five licensed personnel, and they were all duty firefighters, police officers, nurses, within about a 50-foot section of where this individual dropped down. Now, yes, he was transported out of the concert on an ambulance by a hospital, where he did recover from his injuries and didn't walk out with no neurological device. So, the principle behind Pulse Point is the fact that it is designed to sit there and activate your phone based off the GPS location of where your phone is at, within a marginal walking distance, that if you're trained or know CPR, that you can have a drastic effect on somebody's life. The one thing it does not do is provide you... dropped down. Now, yes, he was transported out of the concert on an ambulance by a mark to the local hospital, where he did recover from his injuries and didn't walk out with no neurological defense. So, the principle behind Pulse Point is the fact that it is designed to sit there and activate your phone based off the GPS location of where your phone is at, within a marginal walking distance, that if you're trained or know CPR, that you can have a drastic effect on somebody's life. The one thing it does not do is provide you the name and address of the individual you're going to. Pulse Point will only activate your individual phones if you sit there and are having CSA events in a public place. All right? There were some concerns, or just Pulse Point first come out, is, well, what if John Q. Public has the business house? John Q. Public has the business house, it is not going to activate the Pulse Point phone once the CPR is activated, it's going to activate as a medical alert, which does not advise anybody to respond to this situation. So, Pulse Point is if you're shopping at a Costco, Price Chopper, Home Depot, somebody calls in 911. As soon as the 911 operator picks the phone, it starts loading the CAD device, and they have a heart attack or cardiac arrest, and sits there and sends the CAD from the initial 911 call taker to the dispatch desk, because it's going to dispatch it for fire or any EMS. That's when Pulse Point will sit there and activate the phone for anybody in the regional area based off of their GPS. Part of what we've seen in 2016, only 46% of CSA events occur where somebody has a bystander will initiate CPR. So, most of the population has a CSA event, has a less than 50% chance that somebody will get involved. Most of the time, what they found out through some posts and interviews was that personnel were not involved in the rescue station ever simply because they did not know existed. This was originated out of San Francisco Bay area, with a fire chief who watched his fire after asking him what was responding to the restaurant that he was sitting and eating, and somebody was on the other side of the restaurant having a CSA event, and watched his paramedics drag in and defibrillate or start CPR then, when he'd been on scene the entire time he knew what was going on. As a little bit of a background house, Pulse Point had come into effect. Very few, very few of those individuals receive early access to an AED. Part of the Pulse Point pushpoint is that personnel register their AEDs if they want to, so when you sit there and have a CPR alert, pop up on your phone, it will sit there and also give you the location of the next closest AED. In our community, we know we've got two or three that are sitting there, being registered by Kansas Fire Department EMS. However, with the application of more and more AEDs in the community, is a high-profile need because it's one of the links of survival, as the AHA is recommending. Early access to CPR, early access to 911 notification, early defibrillation, and early access to ACLS care. ACLS care is what our paramedics provide in the back of the zink, wants to stay in the day out. However, we can sit there and have a four to six minute lag time where brain dead is starting to occur without that access. The newer principles and modern applications of CPR has gone away from mouth-to-mouth resuscitation to a hands-only concept, because of the fact that it's now found in clinical studies, the oxygen levels when they take their last breath still keeps the blood, blood oxygenated enough to sustain life until CPR is transitioned over to an ACLS ventilogram by trained responders. Even with the transition over, we are still waiting six minutes on our side before we go through any aggressive airway measures because the oxygen concentration is at high in the blood, still sustaining life, is getting the flood of blood flowing, which is the first thing to look at. So, as we talk through the next portion, the first three things they want to look at with the AHA standards and Pulse Point is this is layperson involvement. Next slide, please. There's now active in more than 2,500 communities in the United States, KCK Metro, 1.6 million people in six counties around here, went active last Wednesday morning at 10:00. However, the device has been up and working for some of us for a month, month and a half prior. I think it's when they sit there and start field testing a lot of it. All right, it does have proven access of where people are utilizing. There are large numbers of success stories on the Pulse Point site. It is a free application, that anybody can download. Next slide, please. Through their Apple or Android stores, like you said, it's a no charge. If you download the app, and you understand or know a little bit about CPR, you're going to sit there and go through and locate the Kansas City Kansas Fire Department's dispatch force. Because we're dispatching to the Wyandotte County Dispatch Center, which is the KCK application. If you sit there and have it searched by your geographical phone, GPS location, and you're here, it will sit there and automatically download it into the appropriate dispatch measure. Be advised, if you do download the application and you are traveling, you travel, say, San Jose, California, and you get off the plane, you power back up your phone, it's going to automatically pick up in San Jose, California, is the Pulse Point community. So, you will also get notifications from there as well. Like I said, it's designed for you to sit there as a layperson to initiate the process. Once you sit there and download the app, you have several different options, you can sit there and monitor. Excuse me, even though you're monitoring, you're not responding, it will tell you when you have a fire incident, it will tell you when you have a traffic accident. These are just parts of where they're trying to expand the app more and more. You know, the app will now alert you to it, it'll sit there and show it on the wall. It has a very distinctive alert tone that will sit there and activate when there's an emergency CPR event. Next slide, please. These are screenshots, what you're looking at here. You will sit there and pop a red screen with CPR needed, and it'll give you the geographical GPS location by street address, and it'll pop a Google Maps location of where you're at. Like I said, scan it out, will sit there and automatically transition, you sit there and load it and update your phone with it as well. Next slide. And then if you sit there, and once you sit there and hit the CPR alert app, it'll prompt you to sit there and hit the next AED or the closest AED position. We are in the process of placing an AED in the city park, in city hall as part of the process here, that we will register with the Pulse Point as the city hall being appointed for early access CP, or early access AED. Next slide, please. And then as we said before, it'll sit there and allow you to transition or follow along what some of the other incidents are going on. I apologize, I could not pull the Kansas City Kansas slide down, but I'm using San Jose's. It'll sit there and give you sort of a log, if you just are noticing. We do have a population that wants to have the scanner people's like what's going on, I heard sirens. So, part of that was designed to sit there and allow still early notification. Pulse Point is being looked at as a beta test, it's set there being utilized as a mass communication device as well for emergency disasters, such as what's going on Hurricane Harbor right now. It's projected to still be three to five years out from the launching point. As we all know, when we have a disaster, formal warning or something like that occurs, early mass notification is the best measure we have to make sure we reach the masses. Next slide. All right. Any questions on the Pulse Point? Now, I'm here to answer all the billion, billion-dollar questions, and how did the ride go Sunday morning? Saturday night at 9:30 at night, I thought, here we go, supposed to be beautiful, rain's not coming in till 6 o'clock Sunday night. I had 125 people that almost verbally admitted, I'll be there to ride, chief, 6:15 Sunday morning, crack and thunder and a lightning hit, and the skies opened up, and we had three and a half inches of rain here in Edwardsville between 6 o'clock in the morning and the time that we departed, when we pushed back at 11 o'clock. We had 39 people that rode on 20 bikes, and we got a little wet very early going out. We got just north of K-32, and the sky was just wide open, dumped a whole bunch of water all the way to Tonga and Ox. Mr. Burke and contestants, some of those were quite wet, while some of those were quite dry when we rode. And you can just see that we had the participation in the posse. Next slide, please. He got desperate at one point in time, I pulled the girls up on the table, gave them pouty faces, although it was a very successful ride. We did have a lot of support from the city staff members, including some council members, some from Mr. Adams, some from Richard Gillum, we're also there, Michelle Bounds, Kathy Bounds, Amanda Zellweger, Amanda Holloway, Morgan Paul Nider, had sat there and gave most of their Sunday and worked all day until about 4:30 Sunday afternoon. Kathy brought her granddaughter, and Amanda brought her daughter. All four girls got pouty faces on, so the raffle buckets got pretty full. Next slide, please. But we did gross $2,104 off the 20 bikes. We did have some more exciting news that is already dedicated next year, August 26th, it's a Sunday, we'll be doing the same ride again. However, Friday, October 27th, if you're a golfer, golf scramble is on. It'll be at Dove Dreads, at One O'Focke, there's a shotgun tournament. And just so that everybody understands, I've been requesting from the firefighters at golf to sit there and express my deep condolences, they are challenging the police officers to golf scramble fund that afternoon, since we do have a retiring captain that loves golf. He will be, I guess, apparently the law enforcement team captain that afternoon, but we will see how it goes. There will be more pressure than I just leave golf in the Grand Prix results.
I just have one question.
Yes, sir.
How did you know that far in advance it's going to rain on those two days?
It is the first in Edwardsville. I figured it out.
But the golf tournament's not in Edwardsville.
No, it's not. So, we should be all right.
The Georgia Senate of the Senate.
Unfortunately, it'll probably rain, but if I can do it, 20 bikes, 39 people, in the middle of a rainstorm for a motorcycle ride, I'm sure I can get 70 people to come out and play golf in the rain. It may look a little bit like that, it's shot towards the end, but hopefully not.
The fundraiser continues though, right?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. This is going on, the next phase for the raising the funds for Edwardsville. For those that have not heard, Ms. Copeland, the president, or the principal at Edwardsville Elementary, they had created a raised basket to raffle off Thursday night, proceeds going to Grand Prix Cruiser. She was out there most of the day Sunday with us as well, too. She is the recipient of the Chiefs tickets, that was the domination of the donations of city employees to purchase two tickets in the lower bowls on the section 115 of the parking patch with the Chiefs. And then like you said, this is still going on to work with our corporate sponsors from last year. We totally raised $2,500 last year, so we're $400 off the mark on this year just from this ride. Like I said, when you're sitting there looking at potential 125 people, you're sitting there thinking, this is really going to help a whole lot more families than we did earlier in the campaign, but it was a little grumpy, a little wet, a little sour yesterday morning, which everybody was, but all in all, you know, it's still a good cause, it's still good day.
Thank you very much, chief. I might, as the chief did say, there was a number of employees that helped with the fight rate for the Chiefs tickets, and since Mr. Anderson's sitting here, and he also, through his generosity, helped with some of the prizes that were available, and we appreciate a number of corporate people, corporate sponsors that helped us, and Mr. Anderson's always been very thankful to help.
Over on that, all council members, Spikes also sat there and just slid a bond, and Carl, I've got thank you notes and thank you letters that are going out this week for everybody.
Thanks to our local business community as well.
Thank you very much. I'll be first.
You have all kinds of good news.
Not really. Not at all, it's funny, nice of you guys, yeah. Some of you may know that after the last, just one, second week of August, that 98th Street flooded again this year, just on the K-32, probably like a third or fourth time it's flooded this year. It was closed, we, this time, the street actually buckled, so we kind of do an emergency repair, which was actually done today, and the roads opened up. We still have some erosion occurring on the east side, we're contracted coming to fix that creek bank erosion, but the road is open. Our 2017 street maintenance project is still going strong. Unfortunately, the weather keeps delaying us, delaying us, because everyone knows, and see where it's on the last leg of the project that's still going on. Muslimon Hall was in today, paving, planning to pave it in the high area. Unfortunately, we only got one half of the street done before the secondary gave out, so, I'm basically pulling off yet again. Hopefully, we'll be back by the end of the week, we'll do some more secondary prep, bring some fly ash or some concrete cement and stabilize the base a little bit more, and hopefully get that paved by Thursday party this week, and then we'll work up that project. Kind of the Second Street, Richardson project, now we're waiting for AT&amp;T to move two poles on that project before Mac Danny, he gets started, KCT and all, so I'm the other way, but now, you know, they're indicating that two of the poles are fairs and we're AT&amp;T, so as soon as those poles get out, we'll be shut down at intersection and get that property underway. Community Service Office, I'm positioned. I had three interviews this week. I'm hoping for the best, hoping it'll be the first of the end of interviews for this position. Looking forward to getting that position up, and that's pretty much it.
Tammy, thank you. Okay, you're the servant of the council. Chip, sorry. Oh, I never asked anything.
You don't have to.
Dave, you don't have anything.
Thank you for buying on like 10 things.
Okay, Garrett.
Thank you for the work on the articulated more.
I've learned more about him than I thought I would ever know.
Well, I'm glad you did research on it. Hopefully, that worked out well.
I would have loved to just let Tammy take care of all that, but she's been quite busy with friends and all types of area activities.
That's been something that I've been wanting around here for quite some time.
It will take, I'm going to say this, it's going to take us some time, because if you look, we spent about $5,000 on tree trimming up Ederson Drive, 102nd and 1998th, and I mean, why you can see some of, you know, it was a drop in the bucket for what we're doing.
We got a public work department, now that it's growing, and it's really an asset to the community, because when I first started, I'm just, we had maybe a man named Woodmore off that, it's doing good, thank you for that.
Jason.
I just want to say thank you to the chief for all his leadership on the ride activities that we had on Sunday, and getting us ready for, getting the firehouse ready for, getting all the folks there organized, and this is our first annual ride, I'm hoping that we got a second, because I think all this work has set us up for a repeat success, so thank you again.
I would do that, and another thing that's really exciting is to see employees from all the departments. I think we're there helping out, riding, and doing the raffle, and so it's really exciting to have everybody working together, pointing in the same direction, so thanks to the leadership from the departments and all the employees that helped out. It was actually a really good Sunday, even though it did pour, it showed the character of our town, and I was impressed with the generosity of those who attended, they were very generous.
We will also be having our Fall Family picnic coming out of
October 7th.
So, that event will be coming, that's just really a gathering of those two, but that's always a nice community event that we enjoy. Again, takes a lot of fall with the staff.
Okay, I really have nothing more to add to that. Thank you all again, appreciate all your work. Thank you. You're all.